Oh, my goodness. Are you on?
Yes.
All right.
Okay.
What's the latest stipulation of the United States of America? Into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Commissioner Waring.
That's right.
Okay, commissioners, on to the agenda. Do we have a motion to accept the previous meeting's minutes?
So moving.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Any discussion on the, on the previous, uh, previous meeting's calendar? Nor do I.
Nor do I.
And next up, previously signed documents is the motion to accept.
It was approved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, the motion carries. And next up, we have a departmental update from Director Richardson. Good evening, Shelley, Happy New Year, and I can see.
Good thing, Happy New Year to everybody.
Thank you.
How are you?
Very well.
Um, the nursing home summary, um, I think we all have a copy of it now, right? Um, this is from, actually from August to December. So it's, it's quite a while. Our census currently, right now, in the facility is fifty-six, um, residents. We have a amount of skilled residents, um, which is five, right now, which is good, um, that have been holding steady. We, our census has been staying between probably fifty-nine and sixty percent during this timeframe, which the majority, I would say, the average in New Hampshire has been, they haven't done the weekly averages anymore like they used to do. The last one I got was July, I think, of twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three, I forget what year it is. Um, and it was, they've been running sixty-five to seventy percent occupancy bulk due to naturally staffing, um, is the big thing with everybody.
And we're filling that same book, we don't have to increase the occupancy.
Yep, we still have twenty full-time positions open and nine part-time positions open. That accounts mostly, it's all nursing. There's just two part-time positions that are, um, housekeeping, sixteen hours to equal a thirty-two hour position. I have the rates there, uh, for twenty-two and twenty-three, how many people we've hired, and then how many people have either terminated, left, retired. And it's pretty net with, with either side, what we've been getting in and what's been leaving. Glendale, our dietary partner, they are, um, also short about ten full-time positions and two part-time positions. Health Pro Heritage, our therapy department is good. They're holding their own. They've got five people in, and that's what we need right now. Agency staffing, we have eight, we're gonna be having six. Typically, we run six, um, but we have two overlapping because they're gonna be leaving January twentieth. And the new contracts did people had to start a little bit earlier so we can get them in and orientated and used to, um, the facility. Um, I provided what we've done for education during that, um, August to December timeframe, what we've worked on for quality assurance projects. We've updated our compliance and ethics policy and, um, training without orientation. We also have a twenty-four hour anonymous hotline now that ends up being the administrator, the county administrator's, uh, phone number so that if anybody has an issue that they want to report, they can. So that was one of the new regulations that we had to put forward. On the nursing home compare, the new site, um, Belknap County for November and December started, overall rating, uh, was five star. So that's, that's great. And that's due to the last three surveys they, that we had were excellent and two infection control surveys that were excellent. We continue to monitor COVID, um, admissions to the hospital, and that tells us about our masking. Right now, we still are masking for, because it's flu season. So from December to March, anybody that hasn't had a flu shot needs to wear a mask. Anybody that also had a COVID exposure, um, somebody in their family that they live with, they need to wear an mask for ten days, and we, we continue to test them. Currently, we have one resident in the facility with a COVID, and their quarantine ends tomorrow. We have ten, um, staff members out right now, nine with COVID, one with flu. Okay. Projects that we've been doing, the window shade installation, we have about twenty-two, I think, shades that were, um, you'd see the twenty-seven shades, and we're getting them on the twenty-second of January. So that will be, hopefully, all of them done. And even the room darkening shades, because we had a few people that needed, um, a darker shade. The roof, they're starting to work on, but the pillars and all the other, the, the casements, every, all the other projects have been done, completed, and it looks really good. We've had a lot of compliments from the families, how much homier it looks with the windows and the flooring. So that, that's, that's great, especially during the holidays, there were a lot more people in. Um, I've put down who has been shooting, recognized as a shooting star for different months. Activities, we haven't hired anybody new, and there's, um, kind of an outline of what they've done for, um, their entertainment and projects. Housekeeping, we hired three people, which is great. We, like I said, have the one sixteen, uh, one thirty-two hour position that we kind of said we would do two sixteens for that position if we could get somebody. We're kind of putting it out there, if we can get somebody in mother's hours or
a thirty and a two.
Yeah, and we keep trying and trying to really think outside the box for anybody, um, and, you know, whatever they could offer. We just had our new maintenance assistant start today, Jeffrey. So we're teaching him about stuff plowing and, you know, um, the facility itself and we're, how to get around. We told him, just wherever you are, just keep on walking, because it's like a circle. Somebody will find you and will send you to your homes. Have the meals and the laundry there, we have new positions open there. Nursing, I have all the new hires that we've had, um, the physicians that are vacant and listed, the agencies that we're using. We've had, uh, four staff members that use the Medicaid and nursing assistance program. So, and that was in April, they were all, um, and they're working, they're still here, they're working compliance, um, with the program. We have one LNA that did December of, of last year, completed the LPM program, she took her voids in this April, and she passed, so she's, um, working on the unit as that. We have one, um, staff member who took advantage of the tuition reimbursement that we put together, the incentive for a hundred and ninety-two dollars a week to get reimbursed and, uh, after ninety days, and she's been here doing that. We also had the extra weekend incentive, and we had twenty-four thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars that we had spent for people picking up an extra shift on the weekends, um, which really helped out. And then mandated, we've only had to mandate four times. Everybody have, has either stepped up and volunteered or picked up a shift in our, on, uh, on shift scheduling software. And we had ten members during this time period that took, uh, advantage of the full week incentive program. So it's, we're, we're holding our own. We're trying to get, we've got the students, um, came last week for, um, an orientation and a walk group from Plymouth High School. They're gonna come two days, one, uh, the end of January and the beginning of February with a group of twelve. So maybe we'll be able to get some activity from that. I'm still on the Hewitt Center, the college, every, every job there, everything out there. To be able to talk to people and, you know, see what anybody's doing new, what they're offering, where we can round up staff. It's just really tight.
There's just not enough humans in these professions.
Yeah, and I'm really, I, it worries everybody, because a lot of us are getting to that age where we're gonna retire. And who's gonna replace? You know, it's a job that's, you can't really computerize it or, you know, animate it with, um, even artificial intelligence.
Is state getting involved in trying to figure out?
Yeah, they've put a lot of grants together for, um, payment. They've really, um, gone and looked at a lot of the requirements and the board licensure, what we accept for licensure, instead of waiting so long, um, to move the process. Regulations, they've, they've taken a, a look at all those and seen what they can do to make it less restrictive. But it's still, we're not getting the people in.
People are, people aren't going, aren't choosing that for an education path.
Right.
Career path, right?
Yeah.
We're stuck at the end of, of that whole scenario, right? So that's why I ask, this, it seems that the state or somebody needs to get involved to, into the high schools and to, to market this profession.
Yeah, the hard part too.
In some way, and right, because this is not just our problem, this is a nursing problem across, like, across, not just the state, but
Right.
across the country, and, and so somebody needs to be
Yeah.
figuring out how to get more people into this profession, because like you said, this is, there will always be humans that will have to do those jobs.
Right. Right, there's only so many things that you can look at to, I mean, they went and animated the PICS system to give medication, and I've seen, if you've been in the hospital, you might have seen the robot come from the pharmacy up to the unit, you know, and drop so that that takes, um, but that's not a nursing position, that's like a runner, you know? Yeah, and, and they have, they need to work on getting instruction, instructors. You know, the, the pay for instructors and what you have to have for accreditation. They might need to lower that requirement.
Or, I always think, when it comes down to it, it's, it really is money. You know, we have said for so many decades, go to college, pursue the, all these other things where you can make a lot of money. None of those have ever been helped, have never been nursing anyway. Doctors, yes, nursing. Now, in order to flip that, we almost have to flip it around and say, we're willing to pay a lot more, even without a college education, if you become a nurse, or, because that's what we need.
Yeah.
And we're, we have this hierarchy that we have maintained, you know, and I don't mean we, Belknap County, I mean, we nationally.
National.
Right.
But we have to flip it, I think that's the, that's the only thing I can think of. If, if kids in high school knew they could make two or three times as much money and have much better schedules, that's hard to, the entire thing.
For any of that now. For weekends, holidays, snow days, you can't work remotely. You know?
We have everything stacked against us here, trying to build these challenges.
Yeah, a couple of years ago, I thought, you know what, the tide's gonna turn, it always does, and we'll end up, you'll end up back in an employer's market, but really, you know, as Commissioner Waring said, that really hasn't transpired. So, um, short of, of what the commissioners suggest and stepping up recruitment efforts, you know, places of higher learning, certainly at the high school level, uh, I, I don't see any, any solution around horizon, you know, you've got twenty full-time, nine part-time vacancies, and you know, you're not accepting any more guests, any more residents.
We do.
Well, you are, but on a, a very case-by-case basis.
Yeah.
You, you take them one at a time, piecemeal.
I look at, um, some of the other, at my administrator's meeting, we were talking about how much people are spending in travel nurses. Rockingham County spent nine million dollars in travel nurses. I mean, if, if the, it goes from two million to nine million per stat, and some places have fifty, sixty agency in their facilities.
How's morale?
Um, I think it's good, for the most part, I think they're happy with the contract that just passed. So that, that helped.
Considering the time of year, getting through the holidays, the long days.
Yeah.
You've got almost a dozen people out with, with the virus. You know, it's good, it's good for everyone to keep a positive attitude, and certainly we're supportive, doing anything we can to to keep people smiling to the extent that we can, and certainly the contract taking us there was helpful. Again, we thank the county administrator and Commissioner Hodges for helping negotiate that
Yeah.
favorably. Uh, okay.
Probably smiling.
Is there anything, I don't want to answer this question before I ask it, but I'm gonna ask it anyway. Is there anything that the Association of Counties can, can do as, as from all of the counties together to, to forge to the state to say, hey, we, we, we need to start a conversation at the state level of somebody, whether it's Health Human Services or something, to market, to get individuals interested in this profession, and I hear the wage scenario, and maybe that's the answer, but until they get educated, until somebody chooses that this is the path I want to go, we can't hire them because they're not certified. Right, so I mean, we're just sitting here back at the end, at the end of, of this train, waiting for somebody at the beginning of the train to get on and go get educated. And it just seems to me that, that us as, as a healthcare facility, as well as every other healthcare facility in the state, in the same boat, that we need to forge that voice to, to the state or to some, some organization that can market nursing as a profession and put federal money in or put something into it to get people in these jobs.
The, I think the state had been receptive with, um, the programs that I've seen and, and the meetings I've been in, and so hasn't the Association of Counties. They're right on with, we're looking at the Medicaid, they, they even have an issue with health. They don't have enough people to do Medicaid applications. Get that people Medicaid approval.
I think part of it is the, the state. And even nationally, they, they don't know what to do. They can't, if they were to make, doing major marketing campaign to try to promote this to high school students, that this is a great career for you to get into, because you could make a lot of money and you can have an easy life. But they can't say that with any honesty, because they have no way of, nothing suggests that any of that's gonna actually happen. I think it feels like a catch-22 until
Yeah, yeah, and we're, we're the ones caught at the end.
Yeah, and we're way at the end, because not only are people not wanting to get into healthcare or nursing, they don't want to get into long-term care nursing. So we're, we're so far down that, we are the, at the caboose end of this.
Right.
And I don't know how it would take, I don't know what it takes for someone to make promises like that. This is, this is what makes this an appealing field. We rely on people who just love elderly people and want, nurturing people, thank God there's some out there who, who, that's how, the only thing that's keeping us alive, really.
One of the things, when I went to the Hewitt Center, we were looking at, um, they're giving a lot more, uh, college credits to the students taking, um, a class on LNA, and then they have to do a requirement of doing a clinical rotation somewhere, so now you can get, you know, and looking at that, it's cheaper than paying for that college course in college.
Right.
You know, if you can take it before getting into college. But you're right, long-term, I mean, everybody wants to go to the ER or maternity or, you know, or a lot of people want to work now remotely, so they want to work for insurance companies and, you know. So it's, it's a tough sell.
And it is the topic of almost all Philly group meetings, it's
And, and you know, it's not, it's not just the, the nursing, it's employment in general. I mean, you said Glendale's down ten people.
Yeah.
Go to any restaurant, and you walk in and there's a waiting line and yet half the tables, because they don't have enough help.
Right.
But, I mean, it's just systemic.
That's true.
The airlines, everywhere, it's everywhere. The birth rate is down.
Down this.
We have, yeah, I keep reading on there.
Good, thank you, Shelley.
You're welcome. Come back when you have a solution.
Yeah, come on.
No, I don't, I don't, I don't have to wait before then.
I've only got two more years to go.
Two years.
All right, commissioners, uh, we have a
Donation.
Donation here, and I happen to know Mr. Italian, very nice gentleman, and he is making a donation in memory of Alice Bolduc in the amount of a hundred dollars, is there a motion to accept?
Accept, yes, president.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, next up?
There's another donation.
Thank you, commissioners. Uh, we have an additional donation, the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars from Mr. and Mrs. Pillen for the resident council trust fund, is there a motion to accept this generous, generous gift?
Move it, as president.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, can I, on that, I just wanted to let you know.
Yes.
So that is a couple, they, um, adopted residents, they're from the Alton Rotary Club, and they, at Christmas time, wanted to, and they said, oh, what could we do? So they got us a two hundred and fifty-dollar rechargeable credit card for takeout lunches. So whenever the residents want to do a takeout lunch, they can use that money. And when it gets low, we, they replenish it.
You gotta love the Rotary, you gotta love those Rotarys, really, God bless them, group. Okay, the motion carries, and we thank them for that. A gift in perpetuity, and next up, Deborah, we're ratifying the vote on the nursing contract?
Yes, there, we, uh, received an email during the last week, I believe. I don't remember the day I sent it, but asked you to verbally approve. I received two affirmative votes. And now I'm asking in, in this public session, you will formally vote to, uh, accept the nursing home contract.
Sure, is there any discussion, commissioners?
No.
I move to accept, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries, thank you, commissioners. Uh, Deborah, permission to use the unbudgeted grant fund?
I'm gonna turn that over to
Our good friend Lori Sharp in finance, Lori, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Hi, Lori.
Hi, good evening. Right. So this pertains to the Sheriff's Department, um, the IMC Communications, six hundred thousand dollar grant. I feel like it's had multiple names over the course of this, but anyway. So this particular grant, um, on March thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two, permission was requested to apply for it and granted. On September twentieth, twenty-three, the grant was awarded, and on October sixteenth, twenty-three, chief deputy had requested authorization to sign the grant paperwork, which was also granted. What I don't find has happened is there hasn't been a discussion regarding using the unbudgeted grant fund. And also, in looking back at the notes, I don't see where it was actually stated or formal request to accept the grant, um, per se, in those words. So what I'm looking for is, uh, I'm requesting your permission to use the unbudgeted grant fund for that grant, and also a formal vote, actually, accepting the grant as it was awarded by the Department of Justice on September twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Deborah?
After that, except that in looking at other grants in the, um, the Sheriff's Department specifically, we realized that we need to keep track of the dates. We need to know when the commissioners give permission to apply for grants and when the commissioners accept the awards. So it came up, Lori found that this grant, largely because there was a bill already, you know, you did give permission for him to sign a contract to spend the money, but there was no acceptance of the award. That, that needs to happen just so we can keep our records straight here. Um, and also, that also meant, pointed out that there never was a discussion about how is this gonna be managed financially through our accounting system. And we believe the correct way to do it is through the unbudgeted grant fund, because there is no appropriation for this. And to put eight, six hundred thousand dollars in the sheriff's budget, certainly blow his budget. So, uh, in accordance with past practice, uh, in recent years became practice to come and ask for permission to use the unbudgeted grant fund. So that's primarily what the question is, but also if you will all, uh, accept the grant award, then, uh, we'll have all the ducks in order for this grant.
We'll move to accept the grant award. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries, thank you, commissioners.
And I guess I just want to be careful about setting a precedence of how management counts for things. Because I don't necessarily think that that is, is in the purview of this board of commissioners, that, what, that, we're here to set policy and management and is, handles the accounting and the bookkeeping. And as long as that is in accordance with the auditors, then I for one don't believe that this board should, should get into a precedence of setting a directive of how that's gonna happen.
I would appreciate that very much.
So that's why I, I would not, if, if a motion needed to be made, I, I would, I want, I would make it, I would be in favor of it, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't be making a motion to direct the administration in any way to, to, to handle the accounting of this. But I do agree with their, their of accounting for it the way that they've, they're recommending. I do, I do agree with that, but I don't believe that we should be taking a vote to set that.
I, I would agree with that, I mean, I, I do agree that the auditors are the, you know, final say when, when they, when the audit is done and completed, that things are done properly and all according to oil, and, you know, that's what we look and pay them to do.
Correct.
Agreed, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you, Lori.
Deborah, we have other business.
Yes. Yes, you do. Uh, the other business is a request for you to approve and agree to sign this letter.
Yes.
Regarding the, um, Hudsonville fourteen fourteen relative to the Gunstock Mountain Resort.
As you know, commissioners, um, prior to two or three years ago, Gunstock was I don't know if struggling is the right word, but they were making every effort to stay competitive in a, a difficult business that's seasonally dependent and keeping their fiscal heads above water under the management team of, of Tom Day and Kathy White, in addition to some really bright new GAC commissioners. They've really turned around, uh, their financials in a short period of time. For the last, I believe it's three years, never mind, three years, I think, they've turned in almost a million dollars to county coffers in profit, the one point seven five percent that was agreed upon. It's come to our attention that one of the delegation, Representative Barbara Campwah, sponsored legislation to bump that carve-out from one point seven five to two point
I think it's three.
Three percent. We've certainly had conversations with Gunstock, with the GAC commissioners, with a majority of the members of the delegation on the budget, and they feel that this is onerous and will, uh, put Gunstock at risk should they have a succession of four winters and season four winters with a lot of rain. And additionally, this will curtail their efforts to make the necessary, uh, capital improvements to stay modern and updated and bring Gunstock into the mid-twentieth century. So, having said that, I believe it is the opinion of the Board of Commissioners to approve this letter to, uh, the chairman of, of East County Municipal, right? The Honorable Representative Turcot, yeah, Municipal and County Government Chair, urging him to ITL the Campwah legislation and fiscal note attached to it. Is there any discussion, any comments from the board?
I'm in support of the letter, I support the letter.
I will move that the board accept this letter, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries, thank you, commissioners.
All right, get a clean copy if you see pretty much, I know.
Be happy to. And the county administrator will be sending this over to Chairman Bean tomorrow, and he will be going, I believe, hand-deliver it tomorrow to Representative Turcot.
All right, I'll, I think I should email it also, but I'll get it to Chairman Bean tomorrow.
Thank you. All right, commissioner, on to public comments, seeing no members of the public All right, commissioners, on to public comments. Seeing the members of the public here.
Boom, I have a question, and I don't know a question asking.
You're a member of the public, you could ask, yeah.
Okay, just because I didn't get a chance to to talk to the county administrator. But I always was wondering about, the Sheriff's Department has a car that they want to trade, get rid of, or don't need.
Transfer to the nurse.
To me, yeah, the nurse. Can, can I, can we do that without bringing it to a meeting, like them? Or is it county property? It can just be used. I can use it. I know, they already told me. All the stock had to come out. I took it for a ride.
All the good stuff.
I I I do like the tray in the back. But I wondered how that worked, and I forgot I have to get together with you to ask you. But now while they're here, can it just be transferred to the nursing home? Like, can I just? It doesn't have to be.
The county vehicle, there's no.
It's a county vehicle, county vehicle.
Have you driven it, Shelley?
Don't.
Pass her a run, nice.
Very.
Good, good.
Did they put you in the back?
No, I drove it.
Okay, good. I drove it, and it has a nice high backseat, so anybody that had a fractured hip getting into it, it's not like getting into an SUV. It'd be nice and better on gas, and we don't have to heat up the van for just to take for doctor's appointments, you know, so. We, I mean, we might not use it all of the time, but it's great to have.
Yeah.
Let me know when that happens, and I'll transfer primex.
Sounds like it's going to work out, then.
Okay.
Okay. Seeing more further public comments? Deborah, are we?
There is a non, a non-public session.
Okay, so we need to go into a non-public?
Yes.
Very good.
You want me to state then?
Please.
I'm hearing that our non-public session in accordance with our say ninety-one dash A colon three will be number two, paragraph A and L. And you need a roll call of Commissioner Waring?
Yes.
Commissioner Stan?
Yes.
And Commissioner Hodges?
Yes.